I'd like to call the Delaware County Commissioners Committee in order. It is Monday, November 20, 2017. The time is 9:04. If everybody could please stand for the plate.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry.
Here.
Ms. Reagan.
Present.
Mr. King.
Here.
Mr. Redd.
Here.
Did everybody receive the letter from community commissioners for an appointment that they need done?
I did.
I think I handed it to you this morning.
I didn't have it down. I did not. Like, was that your meeting?
Where Mrs. Witten has resigned and they are asking for a Ms. Jody Brinkie Cole to be placed.
Yes, she can very well take the call.
She's sending a pretty good resume here.
I'll make a motion when we make that appointment.
A second.
Have a motion and a second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
We also had a send us from a Roxana Saint Meyer for the county commission and tourism commission. Do you guys want to do anything with it at this point?
I'd like to table that.
We'll just wait for the next meeting on that one then. Move down to table business and I would like to go ahead and keep resolution number 2017 dash zero forty-four tabled. I will touch on it to the other commissioners.
Yes.
We will move on to approval of minutes for November 6, 2017.
I'll make a motion we approve the minutes.
Second.
Have a motion approval for minutes. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Next, we have presentation to commissioners, some update, board members, and the engineer.
Good morning, commissioners. Brad Bookout, Delaware County Economic Development. Is this not working? There we go. Brad Bookout, Delaware County Economic Development. You had asked me last year to approach the towns in the county, seek a list of projects from those towns for possible inclusion of assistance from the economic development income tax. We did that. You reviewed their projects. Selma had a good list of projects. You subsequently awarded some money to the town. They reached out back to me and said, hey, we're very appreciative of what the commissioners have done. We'd like to come back before and give a presentation, tell them where we're at, what we've done, basically thank you for your assistance. So anyways, with that, I'll introduce Chris Cook is here from Selma Town Board. Tim Smith is here from Selma Town Board. So I'll turn it over to those guys now. Do you know how to lower the overhead screen?
No, I've never done it. I can just go off my...
Okay, you're just gonna go with that?
Well, they have the booklets, so I don't really need to do it. Yeah, yeah. Good morning, commissioners, guests. My name's Chris Cook and I'm on the Selma Town Board. And the board asked me to give a presentation update on the project that you were so graciously willing to approve. This is gonna be a little bit of a... It's gonna be a little bit of a... I'm gonna review the project and the issues that were leading up to the project that we completed. So the previous issue during heavy rain events, flooding was occurring on Jackson Street between Union Street and South Albany Street. And the previous impacts, it impeded traffic as Jackson is a major thoroughfare through the community. It required this portion of Jackson Street to be shut down for one to two days at a time until flooding subsided. It required rerouting of school buses to nearby Selma Elementary School. And it caused yard flooding and water to affect the homes in the immediate area that are located close to the roadway. On slide four in your booklet is a diagram of the project which shows the inlets that were installed along Jackson as well as 600 feet of pipe to the east that connected to the current stormwater connection. Page five or slide five shows the project costs. The total project cost was $277,000 with edit money from Delaware County, $100,000. And total funds bonded were $177,000. And then a stormwater user fee, flat rate based on the development parcels within the town of $7.50 a month. And that bill rates semi-annually via the property taxes. The bid date for construction was May 2 of 2017. The low bidder was Cully Contracting. Project cost $122,474. And the alternate was $141,689. And then the remaining slides are just pictures of the completed project. And I apologize that you guys aren't able to see these wonderful pictures, but... So, believe it or not, the site has been observed during heavy rain events, which we've had quite a bit lately. And the flooding along Jackson Street has been resolved since the new pipe has been in service. And actions from the town, cleaning and televising of pipe downstream of the project. Tracy from Commonwealth Engineers, did you wanna give a little more elaboration on that?
Yeah, so when we were connecting to the existing storm system...
We need to have you to get the...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Take your place in under your name.
Tracy Beamer with Commonwealth Engineers.
In the blue light on?
No, I'm still there. Okay. I am Tracy Beamer with Commonwealth Engineers. And when they were constructing and connecting to the existing storm system, it was observed that the pipe downstream probably had about 30% blockage from having just sediment buildup. So to be able to, basically, to be able to open up the pipe downstream of the system, the town is in process of getting some quotes to do some cleaning and heavy cleaning, televising, and then some vacuuming out of the system to make sure everything is still running smoothly. Okay.
Any questions for us on this project?
I'm just glad it's working for you.
Yeah.
I am too. That was a good project and I think you guys needed it and I'm glad it's completed.
We're very, very appreciative of the approval of the funds and we're excited after years of having to pull up our pants to walk across the street. So, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
I'm Tim Smith with Town Board of Selma. And I just wanna appreciate, tell you appreciate what you're doing. And you know, with this project, we was able to even have a few edit funds left over. We got $300,000 in paving going to happen because of the county or the state Community Crossing Grant that we applied for. Worked with Brad and Bill and they, I mean, it was a quick operation to get them to get their, everything done and we got it done. And we're really working hard in Selma and the only way this would happen with you guys is helping us and we do appreciate it.
Thank you.
And this is actually what happens when communities do work together. You get a lot accomplished. And we appreciate you guys out here in Selma and everything you guys do for your community. So thank you.
Move on to contracts, agreements for approval. Angie, going to do the...
Sure. Charlie Walker asked that I make a recommendation. He wasn't able to be here today. But he recommends approval to issue the easements to Indiana Michigan Power. And I just wanna make him know on exhibit B, the easement is identified as 1B. That's for existing infrastructure. There's stuff up there now. They're not gonna be digging or touching it. They just need to represent it on here. The 1A is where they'll be doing the reconstruction.
I did speak with Charlie about that also. He's good with all that.
Yeah. And I think we'll be on a separate line than Justice Center with this project.
I want to go down.
So, and plus there's some sideboard. Steve fix it up.
I'll make a motion we approved agreement with AEP.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
I have another contract here. Did you guys receive the one from Ritter Services? You guys like to prove it today?
Has John looked at that one?
Yes, John actually sent this over. This is the one to actually help us with issues with the 911.
Yeah.
With the PSAT.
That's right. I didn't know John sent it.
Yeah, there was an original that John actually revised. This is the revised version.
Okay. I'll make a motion we approve that agreement.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Next, we'll go to ordinance for second reading. We have ordinance 2017 dash zero two eight, Delaware County Department Environmental Enforcement Fund.
I'll make a motion we go ahead and table that. Jamie has a few questions. He wants to get with John, so I'll make a motion we table that.
Second.
Have a motion to table. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Reagan? Mr. Henry?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Next, we have ordinance 2017 dash zero twenty-nine, Delaware County Commissioner is establishing the Veterans Affair Donation Fund.
I'm going to approve.
I'll second it.
Have a motion for approval and a second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Next, we'll move to ordinances for first reading. Ordinance number 2017 dash zero three zero, ordinance amending Title V of Delaware County Code of Ordinance.
This is a ordinance that I've been working on. I know with the hunters and whatnot throughout the state, there are several counties in the state that have a ordinance approving the use of ATV and side-by-side vehicles on the county roads. And that's what this ordinance applies to. John and I have been working on this for quite a while. I've also spoke with LNR and some of those officials and referenced this ordinance also.
Are they mostly counties that I don't wanna say out in the boon docks, but there are not a lot of urban counties that have this?
Well, I know there's a lot of towns also that's approving. Implementing...
I know a lot of towns are. I still have worry of a slow-moving vehicle going down one of our main arteries into the cities such as Bethel. I don't know, I just...
You said the way this ordinance uses just for the county roads, if I'm correct?
This is only county-maintained roads. The city would have to do this.
Well, no, I mean before Bethel gets to the city.
And so what you decide, this ordinance actually gives you the option to prohibit use on whatever road you want.
But we'd have to post each road.
Correct. So those main roads, yeah. So this ordinance actually is implemented through a statute which statute, this basically tracks that statute exactly. There are specific rules within the statute that each county or county has to follow. This essentially says the exact same thing the statute says.
I can appreciate that. And they have to be licensed. They have to have headlights, taillights.
Correct.
I'll make a motion we introduce ordinance 2017 dash zero three zero.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Next, we'll move to ordinance number 2017 dash zero thirty-one, ordinance to repeal Delaware County Ordinance 98007A, ordinance 98007A1.
Good morning, commissioners. Jamie Bane, Administrator of the Health Department. That ordinance you have there is to replace our previous tattoo ordinance. I believe it was created in 1998. It was one of the first tattoo ordinances in the state. So we're trying to modernize. The new ordinance is based very closely after Allen County's. It's been reviewed by our attorney. We've made a number of rounds of revisions and that's our final version we're sending to you for approval.
Really, you guys looked this over. Yeah, John said this looks good. Everyone's still free to get their Mike Tyson face tattoo with this one. Okay, okay.
I'll make a motion to introduce ordinance 2017 dash zero three one.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Steve, can you call the roll?
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Thanks, Jim.
Next, we'll move to ordinance number 2017 dash zero three two, Delaware County Commissioner's ordinance for CASA, the JCAP Pilot Project Fund.
Hi, Ashley Soltow. I'm the Director of the CASA Program here in Delaware County. And so this JCAP pilot project just came around kind of early fall. There was discussion. I wasn't even expecting the funds quite so soon. I didn't think this was gonna start until January. But we've been asked by the chief, the court administrator, Judge Mary Willis, to start this project as soon as possible. So we're asking that you consider the ordinance that we submitted and consider suspending the rules and get this approved now because in December we will not be able to do the appropriations that are necessary.
I'll make a motion we introduce ordinance 2017 dash zero three two.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Steve, can you call the roll?
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
I'll make a motion we suspend the rules.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. Steve, can you call the roll?
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
I'll make a motion we adopt 2017 dash zero three two.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next, we'll move down to department heads and elected officials.
Jane Lassiter, Delaware County Council. And forget these three guys are behind me today. I didn't know they were going to be here, so let's just ignore them.
Ignore us. We'll keep our mouths shut, too.
Ron had asked me if I would attend the ECI meeting last week for him since he was out of town. It's the first one I had ever been to, but it is so nice to go to a meeting. There were people there from Grant County, Portland, Hartford City, Albany, Daleville, Gaston. And everybody worked so well together and were so complimentary of each other and wanted to help each other. And they were all so very complimentary of Delaware County and especially James and Daleville. So I was, that's the first one I had attended. I was really glad to go and to hear some really good news and good projects that people are working on. And they wanted each one of their other communities to be successful also. So that's kind of nice. So anyway, you know, it's very seldom that you can say that's money well spent, but I think the money that we spend for East Central Indiana is certainly well spent. And so thank you to you guys and thank you to you guys.
Thank you, Jane. We appreciate your comments.
Anybody else? Angie, can you give us an update on the railing on the Paul and Heroes Bridge?
Sure. In response to Mr. Terrell asking us to look into the railing being repaired, rehabbed, replaced, you asked me to check in on that. I did receive a quote from RNC Fence. This is the same company that did the railing on the Jackson Street Bridge near White River Boulevard. And it's using a method called Plascoat. It does not rust and it comes with a five-year warranty. I have given you those quotes and the warranty. You also, Sherry, or Krishna Reagan asked to look into removing the inner railing or the shorter railing close to the travel lane. So I checked with our engineering firm to make sure if we do remove it, we're not creating a safety hazard, which we are not. He said it was just there for luck. I also coordinated with Marta Moody and she checked in with some of her bikers and walkers and they thought that might be nice to open that up. And so she was okay with it. After just getting this quote, I mentioned to the Street Superintendent for the City of Muncy that we were looking into this and he might wanna reach out to the same company. Might save him money if they're already mobilized. And he informed me that the Muncy Freedom Development Commission was already, is doing our section and also a long-wheeling avenue all the way to Minutress Boulevard. I was unaware of this. And Todd Donati has sent me some specs that were advertised in the paper. And they're changing the design as a total replacement. And I've given you that in your packet as well. They have asked for an awarded contract. I have not received that yet, but he did forward me the minutes where they opened the bids. So that's basically all the information I have on that. And that's with the company out of Indianapolis, I believe it's called K&amp;K Fence. And I didn't, he did not give me an exact price of what our share would be if we just take care of the bridge itself. But based off of their bid and the linear footage for our bridge, I believe it should be under $37,000.
Has Mr. Donati contacted any of the commissioners to ask for approval before he did a contract?
I haven't talked to him.
I didn't know anything about that.
I figured that would've been one of the first things that the city would do, would go to the county commissioners to get approval. Because the first way it sounded like, I was gonna say thank you to the city for paying for our rail.
Now they want us to pay for our shares. Is that correct? Is that what I'm getting?
Yeah.
After the fact? And you have not received a contract from him to show us anything?
I would rather, obviously, we want it to look like the other railing there on High Street. So I would rather Angie reach out to this company that they have hired and get a quote for our portion. And if we decide to move forward with that, they can invoice us separately and we will send them a check supplement.
Yeah, I would prefer that also.
See if it has the same specs, two fighter warranties. You know, looks like pretty priced if that's the case.
Yes, it's just, it's a new look and they're including the inner railing to say.
I just wish somebody would've reached out to us and, you know...
I was kind of surprised myself.
Updated us on what they were gonna do because the way it looks, if we wouldn't had you make any contacts, we would've been sent a bill and would've been like, what's this for?
I'll reach out to K&amp;K Fence.
Appreciate that, Angie.
Thank you, Angie.
Have anybody else, department heads or anything, give us any updates? If not, move on to payment of claims in amount of $1,783,407.45.
Motion to pay claims.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for payment of claims. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Now we entertain questions and any comments from...
I'm Bob Schreier, 7110 East Centennial, Muncy. I knew that the county was underneath of the gun to be able to come up with a jail of some sort. So recently I asked Mr. Henry if we could meet, if I could meet with the three of you to discuss my opinions on how we ought to do. So far, that's not happened. And then I know that the commissioner's secretary asked, told them that I was wanting to meet with you and that and another happened either. So I guess today's your day. I'll probably ramble a little bit...
I like to. I had not been contacted.
Okay.
Could you speak with Heather because I've had a...
Long story short, I'll ramble a little bit this morning and then tie it all together.
Go ahead.
It starts out with, years ago, I don't have any idea how the county acquired the fairgrounds here in Muncy. But due to the, they probably, the county probably ran it for a while and then they felt the commissioners that were elected at that time did not think that they were doing a good job or somebody didn't think they were. So they assigned it and give a multi-year lease to the Lions Club in Muncy. And then there was another set of commissioners that come along later on, partly, partway through this lease and took the fairgrounds back away from the Lions Club and had to give the Lions Club a cash settlement, supposedly they paid it, back to the Lions Club for taking the lease away from them before the time was up. Another thing that's happened over the years has been in around 1900, the county was given 160 acres called the Poor Farm to house people in need. And several large brick buildings were constructed there. And they had a farm there, they had a large garden, they farmed the 160 acres. My dad was one of the people that harvested part of the crops for them back then. And then when the individual that was running it got old and the commissioner and the buildings did not meet the codes that needed to be at that time. So the commissioners that were in charge were pretty good about nursing homes and taking care of people and they built a new nursing home out there. Then the commissioners after that were not as savvy with taking care of a nursing home as what they were the ones that built it. So the county wound up having to sell the nursing home. And my point is, is we have two very qualified policemen as commissioners right now. I'm sure that they'll do the best for the county, but that's no sign that we're gonna have commissioners that are savvy in the law enforcement or keeping the prisoners in the future. I would like to keep the jail very simple that you do put up. Basically, we're required to house people. I think that a jail without the John Q. Public being available to get to that jail is what we need. The county has a property out on East 32 that belongs to them now. I think that'd be a decent location to put it. You've got plenty of ground to do it on. a decent location to put it, you've got plenty of ground to do it on. The, I would like to see the existing jail as a processing center. In other words, when someone is arrested, they take them there, they process them and then take them out to the jail. If the family members or whatnot wants to talk to their people that's in jail, they can Skype them back and forth with the communication systems you've got now that, we've got to keep the counterran away from the jail. But just keep it simple and try to make it so it works. I was sent through the presentation of the large elaborate building that's out on 67 You're consistently spending about $1.3 million every two weeks. I could foresee just the maintenance and utility cost of keeping that building to jump it to about 1.7 consistently. So I just feel that that is too large and too big of a structure to ever comprehend to, for the county to handle. That's pretty much what I'm trying to get across anyway.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Ron.
And I can tell you, I agree with all the comments from Angie. With the Commissioners you have here, we're not going to end up like we did with the one we have across the street, we are going to do our due diligence, we are going to do it the best way that we can for the county. I worked in the one across the street for five years and sometimes you have doors leading to nowhere. That's not going to happen again. I mean, you are right, you do have two law enforcement officers up here and we want the best that we can get for the county. And you are right, that building out there is a little bit too big and so we are working to do the best that we can.
I just like to clear up some things about the fairgrounds. When the Lions Club took the fairgrounds, they owned all of the buildings with the exception of the community building, not the community, Memorial Building, which is a memorial building was built with federal revenue sharing money when we had, so it belonged to the county. The money that we paid the Lions was for the buildings, not for the buyout of the contract.
And Jane, I think you should add that the payments that you're making, I understand, to the current or former Lions Club, that's going to a scholarship for the children of Delaware County who are in the 4H program. That's what I was told and I'm trying to get that to the bottom.
The scholarship certainly is not the amount that the county has paid to the Lions.
It's in a trust.
And the payment to the Lions goes to the Muncie Lions Club and if you want to check with the National Lions Club, the Muncie Lions Club still meets at the fairgrounds and we have not seen them at the fairgrounds.
Jane, were you looking into that?
I did. I raised a question in reference to that, I held payment in reference to that and we did do some inquiries in reference to that and the individual from the Lions Club did meet with John and I and we did see documentation of them still being in existence and they give some of that money, they donate some of that money, some of it goes to the state Lions Club and I was happy with the information I see, so we submitted payment.
When the agreement was first negotiated, the Fair Board that's appointed by you guys made that payment to the Lions Club. Refresh my memory of how much it is here?
13,000, yes, and change.
Okay, okay. And that was tough on, that was tough on the Fair Board because I was on the first Fair Board and we had no money when we started, we didn't have money to pay utility bills. I went to the mayor and asked if he would give us some money, that was Dan Cannon at the time, and he said Jane, I'll give you this much money if the County Commissioners will match it, and they did. That's how we started paying the utility bills and the employees, we had no money. So after a few years, a County Council determined that that should not be the responsibility of the Fair Board.
True.
And it's county, it's county property, the county has always owned the ground. So anyway, the county did a few years ago take over that payment and it certainly did help us to do other things at the fairgrounds that needed to be done, such as tearing down the old horse barns and putting up the new Hartland Hall and new maintenance building and so anyway, and without the help of the County Commissioners now with the Edit Fund, we would still be struggling and I want to tell you what, it's tough to be a volunteer, to volunteer as much time as the Fair Board does and have to struggle for every penny that we have to put in that, none of us get paid, believe me, it costs us money to do that, so without the Commissioners, the County Council, the community, and I think we all know that sponsorships has been real difficult now, you know, we used to have some really major sponsors, well, that's difficult, so now we rely on our storage, our winter storage is good, the fair, the provinces from the fair always go back into the fairgrounds, so anyway, we are in, I mean, we're in better shape this year than we have ever been, thank goodness, but...
And I'd like to give a shout out to the new staff that you have out there, I was, we were in the Memorial Building for a big event in September and they're very nice to work with and it's looking so good out there, what money they do have, we do need to give them some good equipment because equipment is so expensive and you have to have good equipment and Mr. Henry's been surveying there, got him a new Bobcat, so things are really looking good and people can rent your building, you might give a shout out and...
Sure can.
We'll put it on the web there, what's your rent, your telephone number to rent a building?
They just need to go on the web to Delaware County Fair. Our equipment was so bad, at one time Jim Gore had a truck that didn't have a floorboard in it, you could see all the way through it and he had to go out to Lowe's to pick up a part and you couldn't get the key out, the key, you could not get the key out. Went to Lowe's to pick up a part, he came out and the truck was gone, somebody had stolen it.
I know.
But we found it.
Truck with no floorboard.
Found it over at HH Greg, they stole it and then they abandoned it in the safe parking lot. I suppose they figured it was going to go to jail, it wasn't going to be for that pickup.
That's a good story, that's pretty good.
The Fair Board does an outstanding job and to be a part of that, to see them in the meetings and everything they do and then to actually see them in action when the fair's going on, that group of volunteers is a very special group and they do an outstanding job out there.
And they could always use more volunteers.
I want to say we, you know, we, when the tornadoes come through Muncie here, we've opened that shelter up out there and between the EMA and the Red Cross and the Fair Board members, we was able to get that shelter opened up out there for the citizens of Muncie primarily and there was about 15 or 16 people that stayed two nights out there when there wasn't power here in Muncie or in areas of Muncie and so it worked out really well, but that Fair Board does a great job, so.
Thanks Jane.
Anything else? Entertained a motion to recess?
I'm move.
Second.
All three say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Resess.